Good evening.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman David Broussard.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we feel those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilmember Brooke Marquardt,
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis,
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard,
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter,
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed,
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment? We have any comment cards? At this time, I'll ask you to put your phone on vibrate or silent, and we'll move on, since we have none, to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of August 1st, 2023, which published on August 10th, 2023.
I need a motion.
So move.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on our minutes of August 1st? Hearing and seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3A.
Ordinance number 2023-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute agreements and other documentation on behalf of the City of New Iberia relating to the donation of immovable property by Mr. William J. Dore to the City of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Thank you all. 3B.
Special ordinance number 2022-2023-28, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds and usage for the 2021 JAG grant.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Move.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilman Dustin Swier. Thank you all. I hope you fast like that in the parish. Item 3C.
Special ordinance number 2022-2023-29, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds needed for the American Rescue Plan Act Weston Park Expansion Project.
Motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and the second, I think it was, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed this time. Do we have anyone here to comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Thank you all. Item 4A.
Ordinance number 2023-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute agreements and other documentation on behalf of the City of New Iberia relating to the donation of immovable property by Mr. William J. Dore to the City of New Iberia.
Looking for a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Any discussion on this item? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to give you the latest.
Thank you.
A couple meetings ago, or maybe last meeting, there were some draft documents that y'all got that talked about the terms of the donation and all that. Well, I heard from Mr. Dore's attorney, and he wants to simplify that. So Mr. Dore does not want to retain control over what happens to the property. He just wants to say that the city and/or the economic, the Hopkins Street Economic Development Authority need to use it for a public purpose. So he wants to take out his own involvement in the restrictions and his own involvement in the spending of the money. So it's going to be up to the city and the Development Authority to do that. So I'm going to get those documents cleaned up and get them back to him. So it's probably less restrictive than we had thought.
That's excellent.
Yeah, yeah. He called today and wanted to know if we had signed documents.
Yeah, and I've
He moves quick.
He does.
Uh, anybody else?
So
Yes, ma'am.
So for the public, I'm just wanting to know that this is a big deal. This is a really nice donation by the Dore family, and we're going to work hard to make sure that it benefits.
Your mic on?
Now it is. Uh, I'm sorry. I was just saying that this is a big deal, and we're, you know, thankful to the Dore family for investing in our community. And we want to let the community know that we are going to reach out to them to get some thoughts on what we should do with the property, but we will make sure that whatever decisions are made, it is to the benefit of the people in that community.
Definitely, definitely. And, you know, we've hired UL, and they're coming to help us to kind of discern what the community might want, might need. That's going to be a big factor. And then, you know, now it's up to us. That's what an opportunity. And remember, this property donation comes with a check for a million dollars to develop it. That is something that is, you know, unheard of.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned before that the Economic Development District on Hopkins Street decides on a project and the spending option and comes to the board council with it, right?
Well, we do it together.
Right, right.
Basically, it's going to be a partnership. So we'll, we'll, we handle the money. We, the city, the city handles the money. The city owns the property.
Okay.
We come together with Hopkins Street Economic Development and the community, and we figure out what we're going to do that we think is a public-community benefit. And then it comes to us like a regular project after that. You know, we, we, if we have nothing else in this council, we're project-based. We, we know how to, and that's why we got the money. We know how to build. We know how to leverage money. So it'll come to us after we come up to some consensus of what we're doing, and then it'll get handled like a regular project, you know, because we're the city. We have to bid. We have to have professionals. We have, you know, we have a lot of rules.
Right.
But that's kind of going to be loosely, you know, the process. Yes, sir.
I just want to piggyback on Councilwoman Reed's thoughts that, you know, appreciate the Dore family and their donation to, to the city and to the Western community and their commitment. Because they've been around a long time, and they've been giving back to the community a long time.
Definitely.
You know, the site is where the old Dana's Bakery was at, which was, in its, its history, which was the Alco Family, if I'm, if I'm correct.
When they had the Alco Store right next to it.
Yes, it was the Alco Family as well. So I just want to thank their family for their commitment to the community, you know, so.
Definitely, definitely. Yes, sir.
And we've talked about the fact that, long-term, this may be owned by the city, and it may be owned by the authority.
Correct.
Because it could be that, long-term, the city is not going to want to own it and take care of that. But the authority would. So, you know, we're going to leave that possibility open.
Definitely. I mean, it's my hope that we develop it, build something that has a revenue stream, and then we turn it over to Hopkins Street Economic Development, and then they have a, because they're a taxing body. They, they can get grant money. They could get capital outlay. So, you know, we could assist them and always will, but it would be nice if we turned it over. They had an income stream. Now they can really branch out with their development, and it doesn't become just that one piece of property. The whole Hopkins Street Economic Development could benefit by those funds. So that's, that's really my hope in the long run.
That's correct.
And, ma'am, we hoping that, that, that project can be an anchor for the rest of the community as well.
That's exactly right.
Exactly.
Definitely, definitely.
Spur more development.
Yes, yes. Cool.
So we're excited.
No, yes, we are. That doesn't happen very often. Who brings you a million dollars?
Hopefully, we'll ever send a million dollars and
Yeah, well, that's what I'm hoping. I am hoping. Any other further discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. 4B.
Special ordinance number 2022-2023-28, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds and usage for the 2021 JAG grant.
I need a motion.
Move.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Ricky. Thank you. 4C.
Special ordinance number 2022-2023-29, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds needed for the American Rescue Plan Act Weston Park Expansion Project.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Cool. Motion. Uh, I don't know. Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, it kind of went off at the same time. And did you too?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay.
No, it's Marlon's district.
All right. Any
But I actually heard. I did.
I just heard one voice. And that's kind of a good thing. Any discussion on this item?
No, it's exciting.
No, it is. And this is, uh, this money goes to Park Elementary, which we, we, we need. Good. Well, if there's no discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you.
Senior Senate coming soon.
Yeah, we working on it. We working on it.
Yep.
All right. 5B.
Resolution number 23-124, appointing Erica Seapock to the Dangerous Animal Committee.
And she's not here. Okay. Yeah, she's not here, and our policy, we've already moved it once. Did she know in time? So she's not here. All right, well, I can't tell you what to do, but our policy is normally, if you're not here, you know, we don't appoint you. We, we really need her. She's the head of the shelter. She does a great job. She knows everything about dogs.
Ma'am, I, I
Like the dog whisperer.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I never did.
Go ahead.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I know we, we had talked about that in the past, but I mean, there isn't anybody else, and this lady's been very active in the
I do know that.
In the humane society, dog society. I mean, and she's probably busy right now helping somebody with their dog.
And she could be.
You know, I'm just saying, uh, when I asked the question for a reason last time, was it a policy or was it a, I want to say traditional? It's not, it's not a policy.
It was, it was an agreement of this council that we talked about at a meeting, and we really did. And we said, oh, yeah, everybody needs to be here.
Yeah.
So we, we didn't formally adopt it as an ordinance or anything, but as a group, at the time, we said, oh, yeah, you know, if you, you come here and we appoint you, you need to be here. So I've honored that ever since.
And the purpose, ma'am, was because we wanted to see the person. Well, we know Erica.
I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. What? No, I know. I do.
Yeah, I know her.
I know. She's been before this council several times. Uh, I just, I'm, I apologize for
No, that's fine. But I just feel like, you know, this is an appointment to abort, and she should appear.
I know, but I'm, and I believe you 100%. Are we debating? Because I don't want to
Yeah, we having fun. It's okay.
Beat the quarrel or whatever, but
This is what we do.
I, you know, I've sat on several boards, other boards, and one of the things that's been my pet peeve on boards is when we challenge a position when there's no one else available to fill it. You know, so we're challenging one person to fill his seat. So I, I just, you know, it's just one of my things, one of my pet peeves, you know.
Mayor Pro Tem, you, and then I've called you.
I agree, I agree, Marlo. And DeeDee, you know, I know you haven't seen her, but my vision is this is the second time, and this committee could likely have an issue tomorrow, today, whenever, that we need her there. They got a lot of dangerous animals in the city. So I think it's to our benefit and foresight to maybe move forward with this appointment and let her come at a later date, so that we can have somebody sit on that committee in case we do have a problem that can be addressed by that dangerous, you know, ordinance. So just my thoughts.
Thank you. Yes, you had your hand up, and then
So, I mean, I hear what you guys are saying, but we made an agreement. The fact is, is that her not showing up two meetings in a row, how am I supposed to assume that she's going to show up to the board meetings? I mean, that, all I'm saying is that this was something that we asked her to do. She's not here. I say we table it again until she can come, because I don't know. Does she miss meetings often? I don't know. I mean, I don't know what her track record is, and maybe you guys seem to know, but I'm, I'm part of this thing too. I get a vote too, so I'd like to see her here.
Everybody got a button? Everybody got a button?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter.
She's only going to fill one seat. Is there one seat that's vacant?
Right now, yes. I think we only have one.
So
She's an important seat because of her background, but there's only one.
Yeah, but how many people we have on the, on the board?
Three, huh? Three.
So it's two active people.
Pretty much, right? Is that right? Yeah, we have, we have two. They can't, you know, there's a tie. We, I don't know. We do. We need three. We need three.
Because you, you, there's one lady that works for a veterinarian. Uh-huh. So she knows a lot about
Oh, I don't say she doesn't, but we need three people. We
Yeah, you do need three people, but
We have an odd number. Because we just decide sometime if an animal lives or dies.
Yes.
You know, it's important. But we do have one person. We have two really good people who are on it. We just need to fill the other spot.
Well, maybe she's too busy. That seems to be the issue.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't.
So, uh, but she knew she was, she said she would come.
We had reached out to her. Okay. And maybe she thinks
She didn't say
Maybe she thinks it starts at six. I don't know. I don't know. Let's see.
I'm just saying, uh, she, she should be here.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
She agreed She agreed to do this, right?
Yes.
Okay. She could very well be on a situation right now with dogs. See, I know we have an issue with animals in the city. I, I kind of agree with Mr. Ricky. Like, what if something happens tomorrow and we don't have it? We just have the two on the board. If we find that it's not working out, we can always remove her easily, right? Okay. I know it's, it's something that we want to do, but with her job in particular, she's like one person doing a whole lot, and it could be a, a situation where she really had to show up. I don't know. Or it could be a time miscommunication. I just, I don't know. But I think, uh,
Yeah.
Feel like we should put her Feel like we should put her on the board, and if something happens, like Elvyn's not working out, she's not showing up at all, then we could remove her.
Okay. Anybody else who hasn't, hasn't spoken, wants to speak? It's really just you, Mr. Broussard. Do you got anything to say? Councilman Broussard, you don't have to. I was just asking. Before I go back around.
Caught in between, you know. I like to see the people show up that's going to serve. I love to see them in person. But I'm, I'm caught in the middle of, uh, either put them through or wait for another meeting and see if she shows up.
Okay. Thank you. Now come back. I don't know which one of you had your hand up first.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, and I'll save the best for last.
So do we know why she didn't show up to the last meeting? Why? She had COVID, okay?
Well, that's a good reason.
Okay, did she tell you before? Because we were waiting. I mean, did, how hard is it to send a text or make a phone call? I mean, our time is valuable too. I'm just saying, we should, she should have informed us that she wasn't going to be here today, especially since she committed to coming. I don't know, maybe she had COVID and she was too sick to do it, but today could be a totally different story. I, I just like people to do what they say they're going to do and to show up when they say they're going to show up. So, you know, again, when we appoint, appoint people to boards, I'd like to know who they are, and I'd like to make sure that they're going to be responsible, because this doesn't feel good to me. It feels like we should hold on this.
Okay. Councilwoman Ledbetter.
This doesn't show a good track record. Is she going to do this kind of thing when it comes to her performance on the committee? I think we are a very important group, and you should come. You know, if she can't make it here or, or let us know that she won't attend, why should we think that she will as a member of the board with the other two, you know, people? That's the only issue I have. Responsibility, you know, you could say, look, I can't make it because I'm on a call or, or a quick text if something came up for courtesy. And maybe she just forgot. That's not being responsible.
Okay, thank you.
I forget a lot, but I'm getting hold.
Yes, sir.
Have a question.
Yes. Councilman Swier.
How often do, does this committee meet? It's just a case-by-case basis with this committee, right?
We, we can't predict that.
So it's not like a once-a-month meeting?
No, it's when we have an incident. When a dog bites another dog, when a dog kills another animal. When a dog bites a person. That's kind of the parameters.
So there's no particular time during the day? It's not in the evening? Yada, yada? So it's basically just case-by-case?
Yes.
I, look, hey, I've met her before. She came, I know you have, and I understand. I understand where you're coming from. Uh, I met her before. She does have her hands full, especially with what's going on right now with the shelter and everything and so forth. So I'm just fortunate that we have somebody of that capacity to come and want to serve on that committee. I mean, it's hard to find, it's hard to find good people that are already in, I guess, involved or in that role already as it is, to come sit on a committee. And like Brooke said, hey, if it's not working, we can take her out. But that, that, that was my comment. I know you said you wanted to save the best for last, so everyone who wants to go next, they can. Thank you.
Oh, Lord. Look at that. Okay. You have something else?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Councilwoman Ledbetter?
I just want to know. Do you keep, keep a record of attendance?
Well, we know who attends, because as we have one, you know, we don't quit calls until we get attendance. In other words, sometimes we've had to schedule it. If someone can't come, we've had to schedule around, and we try to move as fast as we can because of what the incident is. So they never skip because we, you know, you can't do it today. Can you do it tomorrow? Can you do it after lunch? I mean, we really try to get that done, because, you know, it's a, it's a serious issue. I don't think we've had any of them that we didn't fulfill.
Okay.
Because you have to. I mean, it's, it's an ordinance. Beth?
Technically, she wasn't on then, right?
No, ma'am. Other people were. And we had to corral them. I mean
I know. I, I guess, I just feel like, um, I don't know, if we do this today, if we say we're going to appoint her without her being here, then oh, what happens to the next few board appointees that we need to make? What are we doing? We setting a different precedent? We said we wanted them to come. So the next person who says, who forgets to come, are we going to appoint them to the board in absent? I just don't feel like that's the right way for us to move.
No, I'm going to put, I'm going to put something, oh, I'm interrupting. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, I was just saying, we put an agreement in place. We all said we wanted them to show. She didn't show last time. She had COVID. She's not here tonight. We don't know why. I said we table it. We need to follow our own rule. And then, you know, that way, the future appointments, there's no question about how we handle this.
Well, I was going to say, I feel like at the next meeting, I'm going to put on the agenda, and we're going to vote and make it official. Do we want people to show up or not? Because I'm getting mixed feelings, and I don't want to have that. So I think if it's going to be a policy, I, I felt like we all agreed that time, so I've honored that ever since then.
Right.
But, you know, I, I feel like now I should put it on the agenda, and we should vote if we appoint people, do they have to show up? Then at least I have something to hang my hat on, because now, now I'm getting, you know, we, we are thinking about maybe changing what we do. And then as the guy who runs the meeting, I like consistency. And when we agree on something, I, I like to keep to that, because that's, that's how I am. I mean, we, you know, that's part of being the chairman or the mayor, or whatever you want to call it. So for me, now I'm like, okay, I know my homework. We're going to, Lanny draw something up. We're, we're going to put something on the next meeting, and then we have a real policy or we don't. Because I, I don't like this, that, you know, we're, we're divided on things that we really don't have to be divided on.
Yeah, right.
You know? But it's not a big deal, and, and I love the input. Anybody else have any other input? And then after that, what you want to do? Yeah, I mean, you know, to move forward, we have to do something. So if our debate is over, and it was good, now, you know.
Can I make a motion to table it?
You, you can. I wouldn't table. I would defer.
Defer. Okay.
That's a lesser way to bring it back. No offense.
No, no, it's fine. I mean, I don't know all these rules, so thank you for
No, 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 I mean, it's, it's
My second.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter to defer this item.
Right.
Next meeting.
And we would defer it to when? The next meeting?
To the next meeting.
Okay, to the next meeting. Okay, so is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Okay. So now we're back. We voted no.
It failed.
It failed.
The motion failed.
Yeah.
So now we make a motion to put her on the board, right?
Now we have to vote on the original motion.
It failed to, now, now we have to deal with the original motion.
Okay.
We're back to the original motion. Yes.
I call for a vote and cease discussion.
Okay. But you have to make a
Okay.
No, they did. The original motion is there.
No, we didn't make an original motion.
Didn't make one.
Yeah, we did.
We made a motion.
We did.
No, we didn't.
To open a discussion, we did. We had to make a motion.
She didn't read anything. We just realized she wasn't in the audience.
No, we didn't, we didn't make it. I don't think we made a motion at the beginning.
Nope.
Why, why did we start talking?
We just dove, we just dove in because she wasn't in the audience. We had a great conversation, so don't knock it, okay? But now, now what we have to do to stay official is make a motion on this original resolution that's on the tape. So somebody would Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Great. Uh, uh, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed.
I guess I'm, I just want to make sure that we that we all are in agreement of what we all decided. I mean, why is this particular appointment different from all the others that we have? Where we have people, we made people come in. Some of those may have been even more important boards than this, but yet we said they had to be here. And now we're changing this because someone didn't show up and didn't even have the courtesy to call us to say, I'm not going to be here. Makes no sense, at least in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No comment.
Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter, y'all making me work, man.
We had
We're giving her time to show up.
We had one other appointment that we made, we were going to make, and that person wasn't there. And it was an attorney. It was an important position.
Exactly.
And we took it off because that person wasn't here. That person came the next time, and it was approved. So what's the difference?
Thank you. Yes, uh, I don't know who put their hand up first, so I'll, I'll do Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, and then I'll work down the line. Yes, ma'am.
I'm so easily ready to put her on the committee because she's been here before and talked to us. I know it's different whenever we don't know who the person is at all, but she is our animal control person, has been for two years, maybe? Something like that. But she has come here before, given a presentation. And I do know how busy she is, and she does volunteer a lot of her time as well, uh, giving vaccines and stuff like that in the community. And I just, I know it's an important spot that we need to fill. That's why I'm ready to just go through and put her on the committee. And if it doesn't work out, we can change it.
Thank you. Councilman Marlon Lewis, you're next.
I'm in agreement with it, because I knew I as well, saw her as well, and I know her work and her commitment to the animal community. So if I didn't know that, that would be something different. Think the last person, I didn't know at all, I never heard, you know, never heard of him, never saw him. But, you know, this person, I just, I feel like I know. So, it's just, I'm, I'm also in agreement with the policy change or adding it to the policy, making it, you know, legitimate, you know.
Official.
Official and legitimate is the same thing, but since we're in an official capacity, official.
Good, thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then hearing no other discussion, please vote your machines. Okay, all right, thank y'all, that was lively. Now we move on to five B.
Welcome, Ms. Erica.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one thirty-two, approving certificate of substantial completion for the Louisiana Pepperplex Concessions and Regimen Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Phil Timbrikey-Gonzalez and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. We have David Alman here, tell us his story.
All right, so I'm here tonight for you guys to vote on the certificate of substantial completion for the Pepperplex Phase One. This is the last portion of the project. As you remember, the sports field and the lighting was completed months ago. So, this is the remainder of the project. This is basically all the grounds, the new building, uh, and the site development. Um, we went through a punch list with myself, uh, with Richard and with my engineer consultants. They put together an extensive list of items, um, that the contractor is obligated to complete. He has till, if approved tonight, he'll have to October first to finish everything. Which he's already started and he's making good headway on. So, those are some photos behind you. I did not take those photos, but they are great photos, so they are credited to the company. Um, that show the, from an aerial view, the park improvements. All the, the grounds are, have been hydro seeded, so the grass will start growing, um, once we can get some rain. And, but you can see where all the pathways were defined, the new building on the left interconnecting to the different, uh, field clusters. There's no more trucking through mud and it's a, a good smooth access point to the, the fields now. This is the south fields, um, where the softball play and smaller league, um, play takes place. And again, we have some, we had some improvements there. We accepted that already, um, months back and spring ball was able to play there. So, this is mainly the acceptance of the north fields, which are still under construction. Those are, in the north fields, we have three three-hundred-foot fields and three T-ball fields slash practice fields.
A whole lot different.
Yes, sir.
Looks good.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When can we go and see it?
Well, whenever you want.
We took a tour, remember? It was groups of us, we went and he took us around and all.
I don't think we've done a ribbon cutting there yet, so I was gonna let the punch list go a little bit longer and kinda, you know, make sure that we look good everywhere. And then we can all go as a group and do the ribbon cutting, that'd be fun.
Yep.
We did a groundbreaking.
We did a groundbreaking, but we do a ribbon cutting. So, that'd be fun, be a good time to do that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Looks good.
Yeah, maybe we can cool off a little bit.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there, uh, plugs for the base holes, do you know?
Uh, yeah, there's probably like twelve or sixteen foot field.
Okay.
There are a lot of them. I mean, we're talking like, you, you, it's probably six different base positions on dimension sizes.
Yeah.
Based off and soft.
Right.
On both sets.
Okay, just make sure we have the actual plugs to put in the holes when they weren't being used.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay, cool. So, after the first, we can start occupying the fields? Maybe?
Actually, after you sign it, you can start, but we were, we have things that.
Yeah, we, Richard's still doing.
The city has to now kinda start to button up.
Yep.
On their end.
Okay.
Yep, we have a few drainage, we have some, uh, drainage holes that weren't taken care of, that somebody could get hurt in. We have a list, Richard's out there, you know, and you gotta remember, Rich is looking, he's hiring. He's been the one-man show since he got there. So, uh, it'll be a little bit longer.
Okay.
A little bit longer, not gonna rush it then.
That's okay, um, he answered my question, just gonna ask about those holes.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Then it's decided and another phase is coming. We got money through capital outlay and, uh, David and I are already talking about, you know, the next phase. And so, uh, soon as they let us, soon as the money comes, we'll be ready to go to continue our program. But thank y'all. Five B.
C.
Oh, C, I'm sorry, five C, thank you.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one thirty-three, approving administrative change order for the Dale Street Sidewalk Improvements Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Phil Timbrikey-Gonzalez and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
So, one question, um, and I, I don't know, I, I can't test this myself, but I was told by someone on a wheelchair that they couldn't stay on the sidewalk. And it's supposed to be ADA compliant.
It is, and we had engineer on the project and, uh, an inspector on the project, so.
Yeah, someone told me that the other day, uh, when I was walking on, and I said, I, I'm not sure, but let me.
Yeah, I mean, we can look into it, it's, it's, it's finished and, I mean, uh, our engineer inspected it and so did the funding source.
Okay.
Uh, but, I mean, if there's an issue, we'll take care of it, I mean.
Okay.
Let me, let me know.
How do they test for that? I mean.
Well, there's criteria.
Okay.
In other words, if it meets the criteria that, uh, you can go, I think it's fifty feet and then if it's on a slope, then you have to have a flat spot. There's a certain degree that it can angle, there's a certain allowance for the height of a transition. Uh, so, you know, all that's listed, I mean, it's not hard to check.
Okay.
Uh, so that's something that, you know, if we got an issue, we, we can take care of that.
And it was on, um, the area from Cherokee to Robert, uh, Roberto, one of those streets. I think it's Roberto. It was in that area with that I was, when I was walking, they told me was in that area, they had to get off and they have to get back on the street.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, yeah, and that's something that we should be able to get the engineering contractor to look at. And if it would be too late for that, let's just say that it would. The good thing is, you know, Public Works knows how to fix a sidewalk, so. But if there is an issue, one way or the other, you know, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Cool.
Thanks for pointing that out. Anybody else?
So, when are we gonna do a ribbon cutting on that? Cause we've been waiting for that.
We can put that one in line too, this is, uh, you know, and we have a list. Uh, Hillary and I have been putting a list together. We have a few more groundbreakings coming, but we really are due three or four ribbon cuttings. So, uh.
Groundbreaking.
We'll probably do, uh, remember last time we did a bunch of ribbon cut, we kinda tried to stack them up? So, that's what we're doing, so it won't be too long. Uh.
Okay.
Thought it was kinda hot right now, but.
No, it is.
Maybe in September, we could stack up four or five and, and, and knock them out.
Okay, I just think it would be nice to.
No, no, it is.
People use it and it's, it's well-used, so it'd be nice to kinda do it.
It is.
Invite the community to come out.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
That, that sidewalk, it runs through a couple of districts, is it just in your district?
No, it's in, uh, my district, Ms. Ledbetter's district. Those are two districts, yeah.
Not three, right?
No.
It's a city-wide project, but just.
Well, we, cause I pick up at Bang Street and I go all the way to Lewis Street and then Ms. Ledbetter picked up at Lewis Street and went to Jefferson Terrace.
That was a good idea, great idea.
Yep. Further discussion? Then if not, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five D.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one thirty-four, approving certificate of substantial completion for the Dale Street Sidewalk Improvements Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Phil Timbrikey-Gonzalez and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion? Same, same sidewalk, so.
Right. I, I mean, as long as we add that to the.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna look.
Punch list, whatever, to check that.
Since we're just doing substantial completion, that'll be easy. I have a little money and I'll be able to say, you know, go fix it if you didn't and, or tell me that it's, you know, it meets the code.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Five B.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one thirty-five, supporting the Garin Paul Atkinson Lewis Foundation's request for capital outlay funding for a youth and community resource center in the city of Niberya.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Warren Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. And all they're asking for on this is do a letter of support. So, any comments or questions?
Do you want them to come up and talk there?
Y'all wanna come up?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Sue Moore?
Thank you, these young guys do.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Yeah, tell us a little bit about the resource center you're trying to create.
Uh, what is resource center? Uh, it's gonna be located downtown on Lee Street, what was formerly, the Lee Street School. Where right now, we're working with a lot of different agencies and organizations. This, this facility will bring all those agencies under one roof. Uh, we're looking to cut, uh, at-risk juveniles, cause mostly we've been looking a lot on the juveniles. Uh, right now, it's, it takes us about three weeks to get everything rolling on a at-risk juvenile. In this one facility, we're looking, that three weeks will be cut down to hours.
Oh, wow.
Uh, so just that at its own aspect, uh, as far as a help to the community, uh, it's all resources in one location, everything, uh, uh, what else can I say? Oh, it's also, it's youth-driven in design, uh, so they actually have an input on what they felt was lacking, what they felt was needed, what they felt would make them wanna be a part of it and make them kinda cherish it. Because we're learning, uh, we're going through it, if they have a say in it, if they feel like they have a say, they keep a respect for it and, uh, they kinda govern it theyself. We learn they kinda govern it theyself and that's who we kinda accent of them in the community to learn to govern theyself and operate. So, uh, this educational, uh, classes, tutoring, uh, all these different things just, uh, give our kids everything that they need to try to make them better.
Excellent.
Thank you.
That's an awesome idea, it really is.
Need more of them. Try it, try it.
One at a time, one at a time. Good, good. Questions, comments, we're good?
And Carrie, whatever I can do as, just not as a councilperson, but as a business owner, you know, that made a living off a lot of those kids, man, just whatever I can do.
I appreciate that, I sure would be a contact.
Cause I love what y'all doing.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. It, it means a lot to have y'all's support, we really appreciate it.
Not a problem, easy to do.
Yes.
Okay, well, if there's nothing.
Keep the kids our future, man.
Right?
Excellent.
If there's nothing further, then please vote your machines and thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Item six A, unfortunately, we have to move. Uh, the publication didn't work out in the day of Niberya, and so that'll be coming to our next meeting. Oh, the sixteenth, I'm sorry, it'll come on the sixteenth. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to, what's that?
Do we have to vote to postpone?
Uh, maybe we do. Do we need a motion to postpone or can we just postpone it? I can't act on it because, you know, we're not ready.
Well, you probably oughta have a motion postponed.
Okay, all right.
And if it fails, you can't do it anyway.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, it's kinda moot, but, all right, then I would need somebody to make a motion and let's combine and do a motion for six A and B.
I'll make a motion for, I'll make a motion for six, to postpone six A and six B.
I'll second it.
Great, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this motion? Then I would ask you to vote your machines. Cause the conclusion was foregone, all right, thank you. All right, seven A.
Um, Kevin Durang to present budget to actual report for November first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
All right, Kim.
Hello, everyone, I hope y'all had a nice day. We're getting close to the end of the year right now, to the end of June, we're period eight, so we're shooting at sixty-six point six-seven percent of our budget. So, if no one has a problem, we're gonna go in and vote since we have in the past. General fund, budget revenue twenty-four point two, year-to-date sixteen point four, putting us at sixty-seven point six-five percent. Expenses, thirty-one point two million, year-to-date seventeen point seven, putting us at fifty-six point seven-five percent. Parks and Recreation Fund, budget revenue one point six, year-to-date one point three, putting us at eighty point seven-two percent of our revenue. Expenses, one point six, budgeted actual seven seventy-four, putting us at forty-seven point five-four. That number's low because of, at the same as in the past, capital outlay projects. And once they get done, they hit all of a sudden. Nineteen sixty sales tax, budgeted revenue ten point four, actuals six point eight, putting us at sixty-five point eight-three percent. Distributions or expenses, budgeted at seventeen million, actuals eleven point three million, putting us at sixty-six point four-nine percent. Police and Fire, Public Safety, projected revenue or budgeted revenue four point one, year-to-date two point seven, putting us at sixty-five point five-three percent. Expenses or distributions, four point one, budgeted, actuals two point four, putting us at fifty-seven point two-seven percent. Highway fourteen TIF, budgeted revenue, s- three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, actuals two thirty-four, putting us at sixty-one point eight percent.
Do we know why we said we're down like five percent or close to five percent revenue?
On Highway fourteen?
Yeah.
Because this is basically is gonna be the first full year we have and we just estimated it.
Okay.
And, uh, I think we had talked about this in the past. Well, people that had filed last year the sales tax have realized this year that they were not responsible for filing. So, they were refunded that, but we're taking the hit in the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Expenses, five hundred and ten thousand, actual is two thousand, putting us at point four-two percent. And the reason that's low is because it was the first year, I didn't know what the collection fees were gonna be.
Yep.
Spanish Trail TIF, budgeted revenue twenty-four thousand, year-to-date twenty-one thousand, putting us at eighty-eight point seven percent. Expenses, two thirteen, year-to-date one seventy-eight, eighty-three point seven-eight percent. Pepperplex TIF, budgeted revenue seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, year-to-date six hundred and nine, putting us at eighty-four point two-four percent. Expenses, distribution, seven fifty-seven thousand, year-to-date's four hundred and seventy-nine, or four hundred and eighty thousand, putting us at sixty-three point three percent. Pepperplex, budgeted revenue, one million forty-six thousand, year-to-date six twenty-two, one seventy-one. Expenses are four point four, year-to-date three point five, putting us at seventy-nine point oh-nine percent. Majority of their expenses are capital outlay, so they're not done equally throughout the year. And that probably made up ninety-five percent of their budget.
So, we should end the year on, on target?
Yeah.
So, you think we're gonna end the year on target?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I think we'd be close. I do. I've been watching that one, cause, you know, it's new, I mean.
Yeah.
Gotta see what to expect.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Public Works, budget revenue three point six, year-to-date two point six, putting us at seventy-three point seven-four percent. Expenses, three point five million, year-to-date is one point eight, putting us at fifty-one point three-nine percent. And that's also because of capital projects that have, we're waiting to complete. Garbage fund, four point two million, revenue, year-to-date is two point six, putting us at sixty-two point eight percent. Expenses are four point two million, actuals are two point four million, putting us at fifty-eight point six-six percent. Section eight vouchers, budget revenue one point four, year-to-date one point one, putting us at seventy-eight point one-two percent. Expenses are one point four million, actuals one point one, putting us at seventy-five point forty-five percent. Wastewater, budgeted revenue, ten point two million, actuals is seven point two, putting us at seventy point nine-six. And the reason those are high is because majority, large portion of his revenue is grants, bonds, government money that we're receiving. And we are receiving it as the expenses are coming in for the most part. And I back those out of the budgeted revenue if we have not received. So, it kinda, it reduces the, um, skewing of the numbers. Wastewater's expenses are six point six, actuals are four point four, putting us at sixty-seven point three-one percent. Anybody have questions?
Questions, comments? We good?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have a discussion item. Madam Clerk?
Discussion regarding eviction-created bulky waste issues.
Okay. This is a single-issue item and more will be added later. But this is an item that we've talked about as a council, we've kicked it around. Uh, our clerk did some research and looked at what other communities have done. Landlords or commercial businesses, we have continuous problems that landlords are cleaning houses out because the tenant has failed or left or left all that behind when they moved out. And they're putting it all to the road at once in a giant mixed pile. As you know, we're trying to set up a program with Pelicans that informs our citizens what they should and shouldn't do. Pelicans has a contract and the con, the knife cuts both ways. There are things that are not in Pelicans' contract to pick up. So, we are incurring a ton of expenses because to clean my town up, our town up, our neighborhoods, the districts you represent, one of you is constantly calling me or someone who lives in those districts, or I'm riding around and seeing it for myself, that you'll get a giant pile, you know, in front of a house. And it sits because Pelicans goes and looks at it, assesses the situation, says it's too mixed, it's not for me to pick up, you know, and it sits there. Instead of letting it sit there too long, we are sending Public Works. We are paying our employees, our fuel, our equipment and our dumpsters to pick up something that is somebody else's, you know, doing, if you will. So, we started looking and said, okay, you know, always steal what you, don't invent what you can steal. So, we constantly look at what other communities are doing. We found this ordinance where basically it is a commercial venture. So, you're going to have to pick it up if we would pass an ordinance or you're gonna be fined. And if we have to pick it up, we're gonna send you the bill. And you'll have five days to take care of the problem. So, we now have one police officer that is spending a few days a week away from patrol So we now have one police officer that is spending a few days a week away from patrol and is doing nothing but working with Jimmy in compliance, okay? On some other days, he is available to do other ordinance work. So we would actually, for the first time, have someone who could run around and psych these people, because, you know, Tommy T's not going with Pelicans and say, you know, "Yeah, five days to pick it up." That's not his job, okay? Jimmy cannot keep up. So I think we have a tool in place for some of these ordinances that we've been talking about, some of the things we've been talking about, tighten it up on, to try to clean our community up. It didn't do me any good if I didn't have somebody to, you know, reach out and touch people when they needed to. We now have someone to do that, so now it's time to look at what our problem areas are, hit them one at a time, and address them and use the tools that we have in front of us. So as a discussion item, I thought that this was the kind of one that has caused the most trouble. I'm not saying Pelican hasn't had some other issues, and the bulky waste has been their biggest issue, they've kind of nailed out the garbage can issues, and that has greatly died down. Amber from my office tracks all of this, the bulky waste is still the big problem. So while I am clamping down on them and threatening fines and threatening this and that, we tried to come up with a better solution, because, you know, you know, sometimes things work better than a hammer. That's when they said they agreed that they would help us, and they've sent us some literature, we think it can get approved, but we're gonna do a little ad campaign together and try that. And then they came back with some feedback and said, you know, "If you could cut out our biggest problem, which is this, that would help in our time to correct our other issues." So I did a little research, no, no, Laney did some research, thank you. And we talked about it, then Laney did some research. So I'm bringing this forward to have a discussion. Of course, as always, you know, this is one that maybe wouldn't even have to go to the ordinance committee, I mean, it's pretty cut and draw. If it needs to go there, we... it's not a committee, it's a meeting. But we have an ordinance meeting, which we're kind of overdue to have one. It could go there to kind of get tweaked, or we could do it right here. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I needed feedback before I would put something on the agenda, because we learned a long time ago that, you know, you gotta, you gotta test your people, you gotta see who wants to do what. So I'm gonna open up the floor for questions or comments, you know, on this idea. Anybody? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, we need to do this, it's long overdue. I constantly get the complaints, you know, because I'm always sending them in.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think this would be super helpful to be able to have something that we have on the books now, to be able to send them fines. And the officer is Mr. Jimmy's helper now?
Sometimes. No, Rusty Moe doesn't work for Jimmy. Rusty Moe, right, Jimmy, he don't work for you, he works for the police department, but he is Jimmy's associate.
Because Mr. Jimmy's still by himself, right?
He's assigned to help, okay, so there's some calls that he and Jimmy make together. There's times that he now has some placards that he can go post houses, when someone's living in with no electricity, which is something that we addressed a little while back. So we're slowly taking our ordinances and saying, okay, now that we have, we only have one soldier, we can't kill him. But the fact that we have a soldier is, is, you know, is to help Jimmy and to kind of move things along, but yeah, they... He still works for the police department, but he is assigned to help Jimmy a couple of days a week.
Yeah, I was asking about that, because I know Mr. Jimmy does need help.
No, we get him help, we get him help. Yeah, don't, 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 don't feed into that, you know? New budgets coming, and he's actually hiring a couple of people, and we've been debating, but he's gonna get there, he kind of convinced me. I wasn't giving him as many people as he wanted, and now I kind of think, you know what, I need to. So we're working through that, but yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Jimmy's getting some help.
We keep him very busy.
We do. Our town keeps him very busy, not us. Yes, sir? Councilman Bruiser?
Ninety percent of my calls are on this bulk waste, we don't get them on a small waste. On this bulk waste people. And I'd like to put what you have right there, voted on as you see it, right there from other communities using the same thing. Let's get something with teeth on right now. Because I have a place on Julia Street, I'm getting calls for three or four weeks in a row. Keep putting junk at the street, the same place, eight eighteen Julia.
Okay.
And I'm tired of getting these pictures and all. But a big waste, sir, it's pass overdue. I mean, the same, same tenants are doing this, that buy these houses, it's not everybody. But they have some bad characters that are buying these houses and making your area look bad. And darn it, I don't say go to the ordinance committee at all. Pass what you have, that's strong enough right there.
Well, one step at a time.
Let's do it, you know? And it's been overdue, and man, I can't imagine our town will be a lot cleaner with this. We can put some teeth on and really bite them, because I'm tired of getting all these calls for this kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
So, as I was reading, it said that you guys would put like a lien against the property if they don't pay?
Yeah, that's what, that's what Thibodeau does, I mean, that's a, you know...
No, so I was gonna ask, is, is there any chance of us possibly even having them go to city court? Like giving them a fine and making them appear in court if they don't do it?
And we probably could, but I'm gonna defer to our attorney, because he has his hand up.
Yeah, there are really three ways we can deal with the cost. One way is we can place a lien on the property, and the statute they refer to is the same statute as the demolition statute. The problem with the demolition statute lien is you have to file an ordinary process lawsuit against the person. Get a judgment, wait till it's final, then seize and sell. So a lot of these people are just gonna wait you out, and, and that, that may work, it may not. Most of these properties are properties that have value, you know, unlike some of our tax problems. These properties have value, and the landowner is gonna want, not want them go to tax sale. So one alternative, if we could add the, the cost to the taxes, I think we're more likely to get payment without spending a lot of money than if we have a lien on the property. Another possibility is to say it's a violation of the ordinance and there's a fine, you know, and then it's prosecuted.
Right, that's what I was thinking, could we go that route?
Yeah, I don't know, but, you know, a violation of the ordinance can be, can be prosecuted. You'd have to be clear about, you know, what it covers, what it doesn't cover. We're probably not just talking about evictions, right? We're talking about any kind of clean out at the end of the month, because you got some people just gonna leave and leave all their stuff.
Right, it's not only evictions, it's just, "I left," you know, they could have paid, they could be in good standing with their landlord, but they left everything, and the landlord comes, and sometimes it's the landlord that throws it all out.
And sometimes it's not rented, you know, sometimes it's just a house.
True.
So, you know, I, I think, you know, to say that it, that it's limited to commercial may be too limited.
Okay.
You know, we could have any kind of property, and then, you know, if you have it there for so long, and you don't get it picked up... Some of this stuff is gonna be picked up by Pelicans, but they're not gonna pick up mixed piles and...
No, and what's happening is, we... I'm calling them, or my assistants are calling them on every pile. They are, I have to say, you know, I get, everybody gets a little aggravated once in a while, but they have a couple of, two or three people that are out there, they check every pile, but they... Yeah, we had three today, and that's every day. And there are some they can pick up, there are some they can't, but, you know, the alternative of sending Public Works is, is getting old. There's, you know, our resources could be spent, you know, in better places. Yes, sir?
So, Jeff, like you mentioned, so are we just targeting... Because I know you say "commercial," but a lot of this is rent houses or...
Well, I'm tagging that a rent house is commercial, if you don't own it, it's commercial, it's a business.
So regardless if it's, even if it's not a house, I'm talking even, sort of like a commercial business, even they just, if, if they go put us, because I've seen some, I've had some people send me pictures already, if commercial businesses going ahead and putting all their...
We both have, yes.
I call it crap to the road. I mean, I, I'm in business, I have to have a dumpster, I gotta pay a monthly fee to whoever. I mean, I don't have the luxury of just going through my stuff on the road, I don't want to do that anyway.
Right, right. No, the minute I get a construction permit, the permit office says, you, you know, it says on the permit that you're gonna have a dumpster for your trash. So people that are remodeling, sometimes they're remodeling their own house, sometimes they're remodeling a rent house. We, we had a couple of them this week, and a big one last week. That's their responsibility...
Right.
...to do that, and I guess I'm just trying to drive that point home, and I think it does have to be something with some teeth.
But it can be, like, it can be pretty much an open umbrella, like not just narrowing it to one...
Well, I think we gotta define what we want to do, you know?
Yeah, and, you know, I think civil enforcement of small things just doesn't get done.
It's too slow.
And we don't have the, we don't have the money to pay somebody to do all that.
Correct.
So, you know, to me, a prosecution, maybe it's because I don't do it, but a prosecution...
If you go to court, I'm fighting one on Charles Street right now, it's gotta be over a year and a half.
Really?
If you go to court, yeah, it takes a long time. The yard is still junky, and the guy is released because he pled guilty and paid the fine, but the yard's still a mess.
We can go side him again?
I'm gonna have to, yeah, but it starts the process all over again.
Well, add it to the taxes. What's that?
What's a quicker remit?
Well...
Go pick it up and add it to the taxes.
Add it to the taxes is the quickest, right?
And if I had the ability that I knew I could at least get our funds back...
Yeah.
You know, somewhere along the line, I, I would at least feel that we were doing something in the right direction.
Well, some properties you will get your funds back.
Yeah.
Some properties are just gonna...
Well, I'm losing right now on every one, you know, that we're picking it up.
Go on your adjudicated list. So if... How does Thibodeau enforce these things? Because if you don't enforce them, within three years, they go away, and you gotta file an ordinary process suit to enforce them, and it's just something we've never devoted the resources to. Do they...
Think we'll have to find that out.
Yeah, because if we could add it to the taxes, you know, most of these properties probably have value. Right, I mean...
Well, if they're able to be rented, that's, you know, has...
Yeah, I mean, it's unbelievable.
I mean, sometimes it's a nice house, I, I see the pictures, and sometimes, you know, they send them to me, Public Works sends every, I've told you that before, before they pick anything up, I have to look at the picture, because somebody has to do it. And I have to say, "Pick this up, pick that up, no, that's still good, don't throw that man's lawnmower away," you know, "Pick up what you need to pick up, or what is junk." And I saw some today, and, that you sent me, and I mean, the houses were nice. Dustin, you said, other floor, you done?
Finished for now, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
So, this would also include like small businesses, right? Because, I mean, I got some complaints about a bar that doesn't have a pickup, and so the trash was everywhere, they shouldn't send me pictures. Now, they since picked it up today, but two days ago, it was a hot mess. And I have, I have the pictures to prove it, so it's like it was spilling all over the sidewalks and everything, so... We are talking about businesses that have not, you know, bought a dumpster, and if they putting that stuff out on the street, they should be fined as well.
We titled it "Small Commercial Collection."
Okay, so that would include...
And I do think that we need to define that, in other words, this is a start. This was the one community we found that it was a nice, my kind of ordinance, it was small, it was short, it got straight to the point.
Right.
But, you know, the discussion tonight is to be able to craft something that we all agree with. Probably will go to the ordinance meeting, so that we can, you know, flesh it out a little bit more, and then bring it as a, as a real item. But tonight was to make sure that we had interest in this and want to pursue this.
And can we make the fines steep enough so that it gets their attention? Because, you know, you put seventy-five dollars on somebody's...
Kind of like our liquidated damage for the road program, that guy's two months in, and it's only two hundred dollars a day, that'll never happen again. It's gonna be fifteen hundred dollars a day, and that could go down, but anyway, I understand.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that we need to get their attention. Seventy-five dollars added to my taxes is not gonna make me do what you're asking me to do.
Understood.
But five hundred might.
Yeah, but you gotta understand, when it comes to that seventy-five dollars, they don't have it. Now, I hear it all the time.
But if you, if you renting a house, you have it.
I understand what you're saying, but the first complaint I'm gonna hear is they don't have the money. I'm, now, there's one I went to today in Dee, I think it's in DeeDee's district.
Deirdre.
Deirdre.
He's looking at DeeDee, pointing at Deirdre.
Three twenty-four Caroline, the house is golden, it's a good house, nice house.
So I picture it.
And I've been there before, because they did the same thing, and I told them not to do it again. They did it again.
But don't you think that person, if you put a hefty fine on them... Well, because eventually if they don't pay the taxes, we're gonna take it from them, so it's up to them.
It's gonna go off a tax sale.
That's what I'm talking about, we're gonna, we're gonna sell it at a tax sale. That will get their attention. If they lose, they'll lose their house then.
Because, because the way I think about it, if they, if they can't pay the seventy-five dollar fine, how they go pay the five hundred dollar fine, or the fifteen hundred... I get it, I understand, hit them where it hurts.
But if you're, you're a landlord, if you're a landlord, that's not your primary residence, you're making money off that property, don't tell me you can't come up with seventy-five dollars out of that. It would be hard for me to believe, Dustin.
I'm just saying, that's, that's gonna be the story that they're gonna tell Jimmy.
You go get a home equity loan on it.
And she can help you do the paperwork, no, I'm picking, but anyway.
No, seriously, go get a home equity loan on it.
Right, no.
I mean, we're trying to clean up our town.
Yeah, yeah, no, we are, that's why I brought this.
This is crazy, we've got, we've got to get their attention and make sure that they understand we mean business.
Agreed.
And if we have to sell it at a tax sale, oh, well, because this is something that can be prevented by them doing the right thing. They're choosing not to follow the rules.
Well, we're making it easy right now.
Exactly.
That's, that's why we need to tighten up on, you know...
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am?
If we would... If you have a house, and say the, the owner passed away, of course, it's family property then, or, or they left it to somebody, and that person cleans it out. We need to definitely address that issue, because then there's a big pile, and sometimes it's neat, and in bags, but if it's there over a day, it's all torn apart. I mean, yes, you know, they did the right thing, they put it in bags, they put it at the street.
I have, it's just like that.
And then all of a sudden, it's everywhere. So we wouldn't want to find that person, because they actually did the right thing.
Garbage is garbage, and it's gonna be hard to separate your good bad, your good eyesource from your bad eyesource. I mean, how you gonna do that?
That's what I was thinking.
This is commercial garbage, but this is family garbage, so it's okay, even though it looks just as bad and...
Yeah, we either cracking down, or we're not cracking down at, at some point, you know?
And all, all issues, they need dumpsters. And they gonna be hauling the light out, telling them upfront, dumpster, are you gonna be fined?
Yep.
Well, we never see the upfront, because we don't talk to them, they just do it.
They just do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, sir?
The only thing I see, the only leniency I see for a business is probably giving them ten days, after ten days, fine them and put a lien on them, because it's hard, you know?
Yeah.
But Wallo, you want that sitting out in your district ten days?
It's sitting there thirty and forty days now.
He has a point, and I'm trying to get some resolution to that, so I'm trying to get, you know, five days, the only thing, if you leave it ten, the pile grows and grows and grows.
Okay, that's the problem, okay, I got you, man.
The only problem with ten days, if people would not come by and add to the pile, you could probably leave it. But the problem is, I'm trying to get Pelicans, how can I say, I just say it, Pelicans out of excuses for why some things are taking them so long. Because when you get on them, they start on the things that, you know, aren't legal, or that they're spending time on that they shouldn't, or they go and pick up a hotspot, like they call it, and they'll pick it up, because one of our... We have called, and we've lost our mind about it, they'll go and pick that up, but I know that's at the expense of picking up something else.
Right.
So I really want to start fining them, because I can hit them for a hundred dollars a miss, and I really am almost to that point, but I wanted to be fair, so I said, I'll start my ad campaign that we partner on. I'll try to pass some things quickly that we begin as a city to crack down, and then after that, you know, my, my scope is on them.
Oh, yeah?
Because I do see that there are areas that, you know, things are sitting way too long, and when they sit, they grow and grow. I don't even know where these people come from to add to the pile, I don't know why they don't make their own pile, but they come and add to somebody else's pile, that, that's the crazy part.
Yep.
So, like I said, the only thing that I would be lenient on is the amount of time, you know, because they getting fined in ten days, it's not like, you know, nothing gonna happen in ten days, so... But, because I already know, I've been sitting here thinking, listening to everybody saying some good stuff, probably the same thing I would've said. And all I was thinking about was all the landlords that called me this, this five years that called me, "Hey, you need to pick this trash up for me," all of the landlords, y'all know them.
I know, that's, that's...
All the landlords.
They call my office, they make the mess, and then they call me to go clean it up, and I'm like, okay, something's wrong with this process.
You can start having them register. Register a red house.
Oh, that goes back to that permit thing we talked about.
When they're gonna start complaining, you're gonna have something.
Hang on. Let's stick to this one issue, okay? I, I'm figuring I'm gonna, I'm biting the apple, Jimmy, but I like to bite it one at a time, if we're gonna do these hot issues, less, you know... I'm cutting the dog's tail off one inch at a time, it's gonna suffer, but that's all we can do for now.
If you pass an ordinance, at that public hearing, you gonna have fifty landlords back here.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm giving you food for thought.
No, no, I know.
When they come up here and they start complaining about this, okay, well, we'll register y'all. Okay?
And I'm not trying to pick on our...
Make your registration fee enough to cover your garbage pickup.
I'm not trying to pick on our landlords, as we always talk about, forty-something percent of our town is rent houses.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, if you look at the new census, okay? Now, really, that shocked me at first, and then I started looking... Forty-eight, if you look at the new census. Okay, now, really, that shocked me at first and then I started looking at other communities and it's really not that bad. I'm not being ugly. When you look at most towns, we, we have, that's, that's the market we're in. Not, certain towns, no, but if you look at towns our size, with our same demographic, kinda same size, we, there are a lot of rent houses. Um, so I'm not trying to, you know, stop that investment. We know we want as many people to own their own homes as we can. And that's something that's very important and this council has, you know, push, are pushing for that. On the flip side, you know, I'm not trying to pick on landlords at all, but I gotta solve this problem. When we, when it spills over the quality of life and people move out of your town cuz they don't like what they're looking at, and it does happen. When people come for new businesses and I have to go the night before and sometime begs Pelican to go pick some stuff up real quick. So when I bring my developer through, it looks as clean as I can make it, uh, and I have to pick my route, we all know that. So, you know, those are the things that, that weigh on me or should weigh on all of us that, you know, we, we are trying to improve our town. You know, I can't stop how many Dollar Generals we have. I can't stop how many whatever people complain about. You, you, you know, a certain type of restaurant or this and that. If I could, I would've done it a long time ago, okay? But we're not a planned community. We're a seventeen seventy-nine planned community. We've been here a long time and things. I, I don't know who planned this community. No one did, okay? It's obvious. And so we've sprawled out all over the place and we have some good and some bad, but we have a mixture. We are one mixed bag, okay? Uh, so some of the things I would love to change, I can't. But I am determined to start focusing on the things that we can change because, you know, we got a lot of good. We, we have so many things going our way and then these age-old problems that are biting us again and again and again. I can get all the new stores here, we can do all the park improvements, we can, you know, spend money, get grants that people don't understand, can't spend on the roads. Uh, but, you know, we are fixing the roads at twelve point five million and I'm gonna talk about the roads in a minute when it's my turn later. But, you know, we got so many good things going, but I find that we're losing the battle, you know, the blight is killing us. We're losing the battle of, you know, we, we getting a grant for a half a million dollars, I think, to tear houses down. We making efforts, but it's these little things that are just starting to grind, I don't know if they are on you, but they're starting to grind on me. And the way my phone's ringing, I think they grinding on everybody else. They see us doing some positive things. But we're not catching these small things that, you know, affect your neighborhoods. You know, when you look out your window, you know, you shouldn't have to look at that. Anyway. Yes, sir.
Just wanna remind the citizens, it's not everybody we talking about. Put your little trash piles in the, at your corner. It's the big ones. And really, the big ones, we, that's the ones we get calls on. And, uh, I hope anybody listening, when they're attempting to clean out a house, they better call the city and see what the right thing is to do. Or we gonna adopt this thing right here to put a bite on it cuz I'm getting tired of getting calls and help our city keep cleaner. It's the big, big piles we have to worry about.
Okay, anybody else?
This would also include apartment complexes, right?
Good.
Okay.
Good. It should. So with that said, I feel that I got enough interest that, uh, I do think it probably needs to go to the ordinance meeting so we can absorb all of your comments. So I'll make sure that it gets on the agenda and then we can kinda go from there. Yes, sir.
Well, I just had a question. What about, when do we require a dumpster?
If you do any remodeling, you're supposed to pull the permit, okay? People don't always do that, but if you're doing remodeling, you're supposed to pull the permit. When you pull the permit, you're supposed to have a dumpster. You're supposed to take care of your trash. I don't care if you have a dumpster or you cut up a little bit of pieces and you put it in your garbage can or you bring it to somebody else's dumpster, but you're not supposed to be able to do construction work.
But what about a rental property? Do we say duplex, fourplex?
We don't even know sometimes people are working on them is, is the biggest issue.
Not the working, it's just the ordinary garbage. So if you have an apartment complex.
No, a duplex, up to four.
Moves out and they leave their stuff.
Yeah.
And it goes to the road. The one I went to today, the lady moved in, she moved all the previous tenant's stuff out. Garbage, it's furniture, it's everything. Cars.
That's why.
Nine yards.
Yeah, the landlord should be doing that or be responsible.
But a permanent dumpster on site, do we require that, like for an apartment complex or?
Over four. In other words, if you're four or less, you get a regular Pelican's garbage can. If you're over four apartments, then you supposed to get a onsite dumpster.
That was my question.
Yeah. Okay, well, I got a lot of feedback. Oh, yes, sir.
She had mentioned a bar earlier. So, commercial business, no dumpster. What are their, uh, what is the ordinance on?
They have a dumpster.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, they have a dumpster that rolls in. But what happened, and I don't know where those bags came from, I saw the pictures.
Yeah.
But I went today and they were all gone.
The reason why I'm asking that cuz do, do we require all commercial businesses to have a dumpster and?
Yes, commercial business is supposed to have a dumpster.
Alright.
Nope.
Or they can haul it off and, you know, or a can. They can have a can, uh, but they're supposed to take care of their waste.
Nope, remember, we had that about.
What I'm saying, like a bar or whatever, you know, you got a lot of trash and stuff like that. So they have cans, but then it goes into the, so they are, they are required to have a dumpster on site, correct?
Or a garbage service.
Okay. Alright.
Cuz remember the, um, storage places? You remember that about the storage places?
Oh, yeah.
They don't have to have one, so.
Yeah, they don't. Okay, well, all the other businesses do.
And that was the point.
Yes, ma'am.
Why not everybody then?
Okay, I don't wanna open that can of worms. We on this? No, I'm thinking that was a can of worms. Alright, well, this is a good discussion and so this shows me that I need to pursue this. So thank y'all for that very much. Now we'll move on to item nine, councilman's remarks. I'll start on your side, sir.
Oh, thank you. Uh, well, like Freddie mentioned earlier, parish. Uh, so yeah, words out there. Look, I, I did decide after much consideration and talk with family and friends to go ahead and put my name in the hat for parish council. Uh, lo and behold, I went unopposed. So that means I'll be outta here come January, but that does not mean I'm stopping what I'm doing right now. Got a lot of business left to finish. Uh, of course, the term goes into next year, but I still have a lot of things that are not finished that I wanna handle. So I won't be just sitting here and taking it lightly. In other words, I wanna let everybody know that, that I represent my district and I'm gonna handle business like it needs to be. Uh, but other than that, everything, everything's good. I'm looking forward to it. I'm gonna miss this room, of course. Uh, we can talk about that later. But, uh, but yeah, I just wanted to clear the air, even though, thanks, Mayor. But no, that's, that's it. And that's all I have to say. Uh, well, tomorrow, we have exit issues tomorrow, so that's gonna be pretty good, pretty informing. See what's going on at the state level, see what's happening. Got a big election coming up, so, uh, so that'll be, that'll be good. So other than that, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'd like to first start by saying, uh, thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsolin for providing us with some poison to poison the grass at the St. Matthew Cemetery and to thank the Sons of Kings for going out there for the second time on a Saturday morning in that one hundred degree heat to, uh, spread that, uh, poison on that grass. Um, and for those of you who are wondering when we're gonna get it, um, cut, we are, we have to wait at least ten days. And we're gonna schedule a time. We'll need volunteers to come out, so we hope that you'll come out and help us. It'll be so much easier once we, um, we, you know, got there because it's all gonna be dead. So if you pass by there now, you'll see a lot of brown grass. Uh, they did a really good job with that. Um, I'd also like to thank the people who came out for the Downtown Neighborhood Association. We had a house painting on Saturday morning. Um, we're not completely finished yet because I think we still have a lot of trim to do because it was so hot out there. I mean, you know, at some point, when it's a hundred degrees, you gotta, you know, hang it up cuz it was just too hot. But to thank everybody for doing that and, um, to let everybody know that, um, you know, we got a lot of cool stuff coming up, so get ready. And I hope all the kids are happy about being back in school.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. Just wanted to let everybody know that we're not gonna have Neighborhood Watch this month, as I previously said. Hopefully, we'll start back in, in September. But I also, um, wanted to say that as a council member, you know, this is my second term and I'm termed out. So I can't run again and, uh, have to wait four years. So I am very involved, you know, in, in moving our city forward and I wanna continue doing that. So, uh, at this point in time, I want to announce that next year, this time, I'll be in full campaign mode. And I'll be running for Mayor Pro Tem. So I just wanted to put that out now. Um, and I hope I get the support from my district as well as the community of New Iberia. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Broussard.
Dawson Bank, our house over there with the lawyers and everybody involved in it has been on hold. How much longer do we have to sit there and watch that wash?
I, I have no, I'm gonna have to find out. Sorry.
Cuz the neighbors on my back.
You played stump the lawyer and you won. I'll get back to you.
We need help. We done voted to take it down and it's just sitting there worse than ever.
Yeah.
And, uh, Bank Street, hallelujah, they doing it as we talking.
Yes.
Road cruiser, road cruiser back. They took a two-month break at their own expense. We charge them two hundred dollars a day. I will increase the liquidated damages next time. I, I don't, I, I don't know why they decided to stick us for a little while, but they are back. That's a good thing.
Iberry Street, is that state where they gonna come to Iberry Street like I heard for years?
That is a state project that through MPO.
Anything about when that might be?
I do not. I can check on it. That's been the talk for a long time. Uh, I, I will check on that. That, that's time to stir the pot on that one.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, uh, first of all, I wanna thank the community, uh, for the support. I lost an uncle. And my uncle was actually my, uh, he worked around my barber shop, cleaned up for me, cut grass for me, done all kinda, done all of the heavy lifting. Uh, he also, uh, I, I never called him this when he was living, but he was Mr. Lombard Street, actually. He did so many elderly people's yards and, I mean, you know, put trash to the yuck road and stuff of that nature, uh.
The cemetery.
Huh?
The cemetery.
The cemetery. Yeah, he was a, he was a hard-working guy. He was sixty-six years old. He worked, outworked probably anybody with a six behind their first number that was younger than him. He probably outworked them. Um, but I wanna thank the police department, man, cuz, uh, they, um, they, they, they arrest, they made an arrest. Um, I'm not gonna get into the details of the arrest because it's, uh, you know, pending case. Uh, my, my uncle's services, and it's gonna be on social media and all that, um, his services are Saturday, um, at eleven o'clock to one o'clock at Fletcher Funeral Home, those are the, um, the viewing times. And then it's one-thirty at St. Edward's Catholic Church. Uh, we're passing his body through St. Edward's Catholic Church. Again, uh, my, my, my family, uh, I told people that, I had so many people coming up to me saying, uh, you have my condolences and sympathy that they too had been victim of gun violence. And all I can say is, I guess I'm a member of the club now. And it's crazy to be a member of that club, uh, but you know, it's gonna keep me on, it's gonna keep me on the battlefield, you know, uh, keep me on the battlefield. You know, uh, not necessarily politically. There are so many, I've always told people since I got involved with politics. I've always said that I don't have to be an elected official with a title to do the work in the community because there's a lot of work. I got elected based on doing work in the community, neighborhood associations, revitalization projects. I met Freddie, I was chairman of the Western Business Association, you know, been around the block, uh, but you know what, though? I'm not trying to announce no election right now. I wanna congratulate the people who, uh, re- uh, qualified for parish. Uh, my friend, I wanna, I wanna thank him, Tommy Pilot, uh, he went unopposed. I wanna, not thank him, I wanna congra- thank him for his service and congratulate him. Uh, Ricky was here, I'll tell him congratulations for putting his name into, uh, into the race cuz this is a free country and, uh, you know, if you wanna run for something, you can run for something. Uh, but man, they got so many opportunities out there. Look, my favorite saying is the harvest is plenty, but the labor is few. My God is gonna find me a job to continue to work in the community. So, uh, if anything opens up, uh, in the near future, uh, I'll deal with it then. But man, I'm so blessed to live in the now. And I am the city councilman for District Two right now. And if I focus on anything else, I probably won't do a great job. So, you know, thank y'all, you know, for all y'all's service and, um, looking forward to Dustin, continue to work with you for the remainder of this year. Uh, you've been great to work with. Uh, I guess I'm gonna have to say that again at the end of the year, but it's fresh. By the way, I was gonna get you too cuz I knew, I watched the, the, you know, the.
You're paying attention.
Yeah, I'm paying attention, so I was gonna congratulate you. Thank you for breaking ice, man. But, uh, no, this is a great council, uh, and, uh, just good to work with you guys and miss it play better. Congratulations on your announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
So with the start of the new school year, um, I felt like it was a good time to ask about the speed cameras. Do we have an update on when those will go up?
They, uh, it'll probably be the fall before they go operational, but they're coming. Uh, we've talked to the company, parts are ordered, things are coming in, some things they're waiting on. Uh, they'll probably start installing. They will all go hot at the same time. So they have finished their studies. Uh, they are in the works.
Okay.
But, uh, I checked on that last week and we, I, talking to them, they said that they would probably go hot in the fall.
Okay, are you gonna let us know what school zones?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Okay, that's all. I just had that question.
Okay. I don't have a whole lot, but we're gonna talk roads for a second, okay? You know that on October fourteenth, we, if you don't know, we have it back on the ballot. It failed by a hundred and thirty-three votes last time. It is not a new tax burden. We are going to pay off some existing millages and ask our citizens to bring them back. It's six point, uh, eight-five mills and six point eight-three mills. And what that will do is allow us to do another road program. We are in the process of our twelve point five million dollar road program. It has done some good, it is not enough. The city had no road program for fourteen years. This is the final opportunity that I can look you in the eye and say, if you pass this, it has no new tax burden. At some point, those millages are gonna roll off and yes, six point eight-three will go away, but there is no money for roads. We get everything almost, comes from our nineteen sixty tax. That tax funds sewer, funds a police department cuz the police have a tax, but it doesn't pay for everything. Funds the fire department, the fire department, department has a tax, does not pay for everything. Funds Public Works, funds the parks. Everything touches that nineteen sixty tax. We funded twelve point five million dollars worth of road work because I, we were fortunate. You know, we got a police department, we started working on the crime, we started attracting new businesses. Through many of your efforts, over the last six and a half years, we've had some successes. So our taxes went up a little bit. As soon as we could, we borrowed twelve point five million, which is the most we could borrow to be responsible that we could pay. That also comes out of the nineteen sixty tax. The money that we would be replacing and bringing right back is from building the sewer plant twenty years ago. Cuz bonds are financed for twenty years. It's the only way we can afford it. So we're bringing it back. It's on me. I will have to do a better job. I will ask you all to help to get the public out and to make them understand it is not gonna give you any new tax burden and it is our only shot to fix the roads. We have a PAC this time. The PAC is stronger than it was last time. We put money aside this time and we're utilizing it. The city's money can inform you about the upcoming election. It can't persuade you. Private citizens formed a PAC. That PAC is raising money and money's coming in. And you're gonna start to see some of them are out. You can pick them up at promotional images. Uh, they have signs that say, vote yes. We couldn't do that last time. We didn't have enough money. So now you'll see signs that say, vote yes. You'll see billboards, you'll begin to see videos. And we are trying to educate you and at the same time, the PAC is trying to persuade you. If we do not have this to fix our roads, sixty percent of our roads still need attention. Twenty percent were good. We're fixing twenty percent with twelve point five million and we got a long way to go. Now, of the sixty that need attention, they all don't need the same level of attention, but they will. If we do like every other administration, and, and not because it's gonna be our fault, but if we can't address the roads anymore, then it's gonna just sit there and they only gonna deteriorate because we, we left them too long. So I'll have to do a better job. You're gonna be seeing in the coming weeks. I'll be getting out there. I'll start with civic groups this week. I'm gonna expand my reach and do some new things that we haven't done before to reach people. Um, asking my council members to do the same. We need to get the word out. But you're gonna see, uh, much more informative and a much better ad campaign this time because I think that, uh, putting my desk on the sidewalk and talking to almost a hundred people, uh, of many, many of them that I talked to, they just voted no. they just voted no for every amendment and just, some people didn't even read them. Other people thought, well, some kinda way it must be a new tax. They voted no. Um, I don't think anybody wants to not fix the roads because even the people who came and said, I vote no for everything, before they left, they said, how you gonna fix the roads? Well, you know, i- it, it takes funds to fix the roads. So we'll have to do a better job. From what I heard, we'll wait and see. There'll even be a little ad campaign about our placement in the ballot. We are hoping we're last. We hope the last thing that we can say, look, I don't care if you vote no for everything else, but if you, you know, hit the yes button on that last one and if you wanna quit tearing your car up. So, you know, we're gonna do a push for that, but I just, I will continue to get that message out. We have two months till, uh, the election. There's a lot of things going on politically around us, uh, concerning us, concerning our parish. Uh, so I don't want that to get lost in the, in the shuffle. So you'll see over the upcoming weeks, we'll be ramping that up. And that's really all I wanna talk about tonight. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.